And I see Jason's back in New York.
Are you ready, Jan? It's 7:16.
Yep, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Amanda will be here in a second. Her computer just like mine died.
I'm here now.
Thank you. Did you get everything?
Um, I just, I pulled it up on my tablet, so.
Okay, alright. Yeah, I'm back to bed.
Yeah, I don't know if it's on.
Okay, the first one.
On my drive, so.
Everyone should have received the email that shows who's doing what tonight. That way you had it in advance to write it down, so. Might go faster. The first ordinance is number 52, Mr. Ventura.
Yes, since there's been no negative feedback, just positive, I'm gonna ask for the second and third reading.
Any questions or comments?
I kinda feel like, I kinda feel like we should let it go to three different days. I haven't heard any, any feedback at all. Mr. Ventura, you've gotten some feedback, though?
Yes, it's, I've gotten a few things back. It's positive. Also heard from the police department that there's a great number of offenders that are repeat offenders, which makes this a valid point.
Yep, that's a, Chief could probably tell us that's why we have a person who moved on Highland. And that house has been vacant now for quite, for quite a bit.
Well, if everyone else is okay with it, then I'm, I'm okay with going second and third.
Okay, that was gonna be my question. If everybody's okay, we'll go to second and third and then adopt. But here nothing, that's our plan for the meeting. Then we have 58, 59, and 60. They all have to do with the dispatch equipment and software, which includes an 800 megahertz frequency system. This is something we planned to do and have had on the books to do, and we're finally moving forward. Chief Ripley?
Well, you.
You've been the lead.
Well, Ms. Tully, you certainly hit it on the head. It's something we've talked about. It's been needed. The full history, which I'll talk more about during the council meeting, is the fact that when we had a narrow ban, which had to do with everybody having computers on their hips, we, they assured us, the FCC assured that there would be no drop in service. And right now, our police officers can't talk to dispatch from 480, from Florence Drive. So this will solve those issues, plus interoperability. The reason there's three ordinances is it's three different companies, but all one company, and I'll explain. BNC Communications reps for Motorola, and the actual radios themselves are coming from Motorola Solutions, who do the state, they're the ones who bid it through the state purchasing. AVTEC, BNC reps for, they did it through GAS, which is the federal government bidding process. And then the third and final piece is BNC themselves. The piece is that they're going to provide the labor to install all this equipment. And it's going to benefit every department in the city that functions on the road with vehicles. Police and Fire are going to 800 for day-to-day operations. We're going to maintain our 420 system as a backup, as in it doesn't take a lot of money to operate. And it's gonna free up some 420 mobiles. The police department's gonna be removing their service band radios from their cruisers. We talked about the fact that it's important during a snow event that police officers be able to speak directly to service trucks when there's a problem. So we're gonna be adding those to the big plow trucks based on how many radios we free up that are in good enough shape. We'll be installing those in as many service vehicles as we can, and they'll be functioning on Channel 6. So I would ask for three readings tonight, if that's possible. That lets us get the equipment ordered. They're telling me right now it's six to eight weeks, and we're talking a few weeks to get everything implemented with the installation of all the equipment and all the vehicles. Then they will move to dispatch.
So it's six to eight weeks to receive the equipment and then install, or is that including installation?
Nope, just to receive the equipment.
Okay, from Motorola.
Correct.
Mr. Veras. I know you're here because it was a black screen, but it said your name. Do you wanna talk about how this is being financed?
Sure. Thanks, Jan. What we plan to do is borrow $575,000 over five years and pay for the rest with available cash on hand from the Safety Service Fund.
Questions? Mr. Garvis, do you wanna say anything?
Yeah, I was gonna save it until we actually get into actual, the actual meeting today, but I'm thrilled that we're doing this, Chief. Really looking forward to it. I agree with everyone that it's long overdue. Some of you may know, I'm a very avid two-way radio guy. I've been listening to the city for over 20 years, and I cringe every time one of our ambulances calls out at Hillcrest Hospital and nobody has a clue what they said. You know, we had an issue a week or so ago where some of our city vehicles were way north of the city in another county, and they couldn't get into the system anymore. And I know this is gonna fix this, and I'm really looking forward to it.
Take it.
And also, so everyone knows, included in that, in the legislation tonight, is an extended warranty. All the radios have a three-year, lack for better term, bumper-to-bumper warranty. And we're purchasing an additional four years on the council, which will give us five years. That includes the software and the hardware. I consulted with Kyle Collins, the IT Director, about the equipment, because $4,000 of that a year is for the equipment. And he advised that we should go ahead, purchase it from AVTEC, so we don't end up with dispatch councils that aren't working. And they're saying, well, it's because you replaced it with different equipment. It's your fault. And, Kyle, I don't know if you wanna say anymore. It made perfect sense to me, so.
Well, yes, thanks, Chief. Yeah, with, with something as specialized and customized as the platform that they use in emergency dispatch, I think it's something that it's who of us to just purchase the extended warranty directly from the vendor, 'cause I'm sure Jeff, you can attest to this as well, you know. When, when you try to tell a software vendor that it's their software's fault, not the hardware's fault, their, their first knee-jerk reaction is to point at the hardware. So if we buy the entire system from them, we can say, hey, it's not working, and.
It's their problem.
It's their problem, exactly. Yeah, I think it's, it's well worth the investment, just in turnaround time alone, should we have a problem. And with every warranty, we hope that we don't use it, but I think that it's a solid financial investment. So, thank you.
And who provides the tech support and the equipment support? Is it from the company who's basically a rep to all the vendors, or is it each individual vendor? So like if a Motorola radio goes bad, do we call Motorola, or do we call Mr. Curse?
We call BNC Communications, our service division.
Okay, so BNC will be the overseer.
Yes.
They're, they're basically the overseer, the manager of the account.
Correct.
Okay.
Then also, and I apologize for not mentioning it earlier, on the piece of legislation, I think it's 60 for BNC Communications, the second quote was for a net clock. That's gonna put most, but not all of our equipment on the same time. So all the dispatch times, the recorded lines coming in, everything's gonna be coming off of that clock. Some of our cameras, but not all, because of some shortcomings we currently have in our security cameras within the city, will not be on there. And I don't know that we're in a position anytime soon to get them there. That's kind of a question for Kyle. But in the past, 911 would have one time. Dispatches are giving units a different time. Now, all that stuff is gonna be the same. And that was.
Yeah. The reasoning behind that is with, with a closed system like that, it's not directly connected to the internet, so you can't just use Microsoft or another reputable service to time sync. You have to have one single internal time-sync device that handles all of your closed-off-to-the-world devices. So it's a, it's a necessary evil and something that's also a solid investment for us.
Looked through that all my years at AT&amp;T. Hmm, we didn't use team meetings, or we used ourselves, unfortunately, sometimes. So if, do I have any other questions or comments? Otherwise, the recommendation from the city is that we go 1, 2, 3 on 58, 59, and 60.
I just had a quick question. This, this system is not yet, but about to be federally mandated or state mandated?
It's not mandated, but they're, they're pushing you for grants for interoperability. They never mandate, because once they would mandate something like that, we'd all have our hands out, go and pay for it.
So that's what I'm asking. Is there going to be any assistance forthcoming from the state or federal with this? Or this is it? We're stuck with this $600,000 bill, and it's all on us?
Correct. Now, we did get, eight years ago, nine years ago, we, the fire department got a grant through AFG. It was about $100,000 worth of 800 equipment. So that saved us money. We're still using those radios. So I could have replaced them, but they're still operational. They're still supported for next couple of years. So I felt it was easier to replace them as they, as needed, instead of just replacing a good radio right now to get us on the system.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, this impacts the dispatch for police and fire, and you're gonna hook in the service truck so that you have the ability, if you require them, to get a hold of them quickly?
Correct. They're gonna have the old, the old 420 system will be in the service vehicles. That obviously will be at the end of this project. Hopefully this plow season. I'd like to get it before that, but I just don't think that's gonna happen time-wise.
Don't say that word again. There are two words we use: snow and plow. We're gonna, we're gonna look like, we're gonna have the year like Dave's got in his background. Mr. Finley or Mr. Ventura, do you have any questions? Okay, then, if you notice, for 58, Dave will be the lead. Jeff is the second. Jeff is the lead for 59. I'll second it. Jeff will be the lead for 60, with Dave as second. And then coming down to our favorite committee, only because I spent many years on this committee. Resolution number 61, Ms. Brandt.
Yeah, super excited that Jason stepped up. I've known Jason since we were little kids. He's got, I know him and his wife are very involved in sports. He was always involved in sports. And his resume is really impressive from a management standpoint, so he's gonna be a really great fit for our committee. So I'm really excited that he stepped up.
It's nice to have someone who lives in the community, but also has spent their lifetime in this area and doing sports within the rec center and being run. And then, he also used to cut grass with Gregors, so. You know, he worked for the Parks Department. That's pretty cool. Any questions or comments? Is, is there anything from the rec department they wanna add? If not, Jessica would say 1, 2, 3.
Yeah, let's get him going so he can come to our next meeting. Absolutely.
Is he coming on tonight so we can make faces at him?
I have no idea. Probably not. He's probably busy with sports.
Is, does Jason have a son on the freshman football team?
Does he?
Yeah, I heard, I don't know if he does or not. I just, I was at the game tonight, and I heard that name called repeatedly. Yeah.
Okay, there, yeah. So I'm sure he does sports. I know he's got a daughter on girls volleyball or basketball, so, yep.
He's a, I think he'll be an asset and look forward, so. So Jessica will take that. I'll second it. And then, when we get to adjournment, I don't remember what I said. Hold on, I have it here. Jessica, you'll adjourn, and Dave is second. If there's no questions, it's 7:30 on the dot. Annette, where are you? You're not in Venice, are you? You're on mute. Where are you at?
I'm just a neighborhood.
Oh, okay. That may be, I gotta figure out how to put Venice in the background. Jessica, sometime at this meeting, don't forget, we want that guest appearance.
Okay, I'm sure. Well, last time when we were clapping for Jeff Cole, Grady came in, 'cause he thought everyone was clapping for him. So if you guys all start clapping, he'll come.
That's cute. Okay, Mayor, it's yours.
Alrighty, thank you, and welcome to the September 24th regular council meeting. It is 7:31 PM. Will Ms. Traska please call the roll?
Ms. Brandt?
Here.
Mr. Finley?
Here.
Ms. Garvis?
Here.
Ms. Tully?
Here.
And Mr. Ventura?
Here.
Alright, next up is the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, next up is the approval of the minutes of August 13th and September 10th, 2020.
I'd make a motion that we approve both sets of meeting minutes as submitted by the clerk of council.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Minutes are approved. Next would be public comments. Ms. Traska, do we have any public comments this evening?
No, we do not.
Okay, then we'll move right into pending our new legislation, starting with ordinance number 52.
Mayor, I propose ordinance number 52, 2020, for a second and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Ventura, would you like to explain?
This was to update the law as far as penalties go. It seems that most of the cities are doing this. And in light of some of the complaints that we've had over a small period of time, in talking to the police department, we have found that there is a vast majority of offenders that are actually repeat offenders. And this has been a welcomed change in the ordinance. Any feedback has been positive.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
We'd like to hear the title first, sir.
Oh, I skipped it again, didn't I? I apologize.
Alright, I was waiting. Alright, an ordinance amending section 331-38 of the codified ordinances of the City of Macedonia relative to stopping for school buses.
Now, what is your pleasure?
I move to adopt ordinance number 52, 2020, and post the same according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Finley?
Yes.
Mr. Garvis?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
And Mr. Ventura?
Yes.
Ordinance number 52 passes. Thank you, Councilor Ventura, for all your hard work on that. We do appreciate it. Ordinance number 58.
I moved to offer ordinance 58, 2020 for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement for the replacement of the City of Macedonia's dispatch equipment and software.
So just to be clear, the next three are all related to the same thing, but I'm gonna hand these all to Chief Ripley. So Chief Ripley, you're up.
Good evening, everyone. This is a move we've talked about for many years, operationally within both police and fire. It moves us for the day-to-day operations to the 800 megahertz system through Summit County, which is also on the MARCS system, which gives us regional communications. Our units have problems if they travel outside the community. And more importantly, within our own community, since narrow banning occurred on our old 420 radio system, police officers on 480 Florence Drive had a very difficult time being able to get a hold of dispatch. Very dangerous for them. The three pieces of legislation, the first one here is for, I believe it's the actual dispatch councils themselves, to bring them into this century. We've always band-aided things together, and we're doing it right. And it's something that's gonna serve this community very well and the region for many, many years to come. And it, also part of this is we will be adding the capability to the service vehicles during inclement weather to speak directly to the police department. So if there's an incident where they need a plow truck or salt, they can speak directly to them and give them better instructions and also frees up dispatch time. So very well needed. It's an expensive venture, but it's a very necessary step in today's world.
I'll also add that this is part, ordinance 58 is part of the four-year warranty we're purchasing in addition to the one year that it comes with. Obviously, with this being a high cost, we wanna be cautious and careful. If anything breaks on it, we have the ability to make the necessary repairs. I'll additionally say that the 280 fund from the levy that we passed for police, fire, and services helping to fund this. I wanna definitely thank the voters of the community for passing that, because without that, I think we'd be in a mad scramble to figure out how we're gonna pay for the exorbitant costs that these come with. So, any other discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
I move to adopt ordinance number 58, 2020, and post the same according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Finley?
Abstain.
Mr. Garvis?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
And Mr. Ventura?
Yes.
Ordinance number 58 passes. Ordinance number 59.
Mayor, I move to offer ordinance 59, 2020 for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement to upgrade radio equipment for the City of Macedonia dispatch system to accommodate an 800 megahertz frequent, frequency system, excuse me.
So ordinance 59 is for the radio equipment for police, fire, and dispatch. Chief, anything you wanna add to this one?
No, it's all just tied together. And you're exactly right, Mayor. This is from Motorola Solutions, and it's all the actual radios themselves, portables and mobiles.
Thank you. And what is your pleasure?
Jeff, you're on mute.
Thank you. If you don't mind, Mayor, I'd like to just make a quick comment on this legislation. I am a radio enthusiast. A lot of people know that about me. I've listened to our city's two-way radio traffic for probably 20 years. And I'm thrilled to see that we're finally doing this. A lot of people may not know this, but almost every community in our county is already on this system. And I know that our neighbors in Sagamore Hills are coming onto it. I think we're gonna benefit substantially from this when it comes to the fire departments working with other cities, either us going somewhere or somebody coming to our city. And like the chief has said, everything that he's mentioned is great. And I actually learned tonight about the, moving the service department to the 420 radios. I think that's amazing. And will actually probably improve the radio performance for the service department. So with that said, I'd like to move to adopt ordinance 59, 2020, and post the same according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Finley?
Abstain.
Mr. Garvis?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
And Mr. Ventura?
Yes.
Ordinance number 59 passes. Ordinance number 60.
Mayor, I move to offer ordinance 60, 2020 for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement with BNC Communications for the installation of 800 megahertz frequency radio equipment in the City of Macedonia dispatch center and certain city vehicles.
So ordinance number 60 is the labor pieces and parts to install the councils and the tower. Chief, anything you wanna add to the final piece here?
No, I think we've all said it numerous times tonight. We're just happy it's happening.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
I move to adopt ordinance 60, 2020, and post the same according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Finley?
Abstain.
Mr. Garvis?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
And Mr. Ventura?
Yes.
Ordinance number 60 passes. I wanna thank council for passing this. This is a long time coming. Again, we've, we've talked about this for quite some time, and it's a great benefit to the community, especially for our safety. But I definitely wanna recognize Chief Ripley. I don't think people realize the incredible amount of work that he put into getting this to where we are today and having this come into fruition. So Chief, I wanna extend my gratitude to you for all the work you put into this. And thank you from the bottom of my heart, because I know that this will keep us safer. It'll give us better means of communication, and I appreciate all that you've done.
No problem. Happy to do it.
Okay, moving on to resolution number 61.
Mayor, I move to offer resolution number 61, 2020 for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
A resolution confirming the appointment by the mayor of Jason Hack to the Parks and Recreation Commission.
So as we're all aware, we've had some openings on some of our boards and commissions. Generally, those flow through my office for assigning someone to them when there's an opening. Mr. Hack had reached out to me in interest of the open, last open position on the Parks and Recreation Board. I'm glad to have him. I know he's very active in the community. He has children in our community. He's active in sports and the recreation center. So I think he'd be a great fit for us in that role. Any other discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
I just wanna say, welcome, Jason. I'm really excited for, for him to be stepping up and coming onto this board. I think he'll be a great addition, and I've known him since we were little kids. So hopefully, he's still a great guy. I remember him. I don't have any doubt. So I move that we pass and post resolution number 61, 2020, and the same according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Finley?
Yes.
Mr. Garvis?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
And Mr. Ventura?
Yes.
Resolution number 61 passes. Welcome, Mr. Hack, to the Parks and Rec Board. Do we have any other motions or legislative actions? Hearing none, do we have any correspondence to the clerk?
The only thing that I have, I know that I sent it out to everybody, and Mark, I don't know if you found, is Mark on here?
He is.
Okay. Mark, I don't know if you found anything else about the liquor permit. I didn't, I was looking through everything that Josephine had, but I didn't find anything.
Yeah, just what I had sent out to council, kind of explained the process. So, you know, if anybody had any specific objections to a permit holder's renewal, they can let me know, and we can look to see if it's a statutory authorized basis to object. Otherwise, it's just through the process for renewal.
Okay, perfect. That's, that's all that I had, then.
Thank you. So then we'll move right into the mayor's report. We've been working on for quite some time the trick-or-treat for October 31st. I was held up by Summit County Public Health, and what we had done was reached out to our neighboring Nordonia communities, Norfield Village, Norfield Center, and Sagamore Hills, and obviously us. We finally got the okay from the state. We verified that with Summit County Public Health. On our website, macedonia.ohus.us, we have all the information on there about trick-or-treat for October 31st between 6:00 and 8:00 PM. The thing that's very unique about this year is on October 31st, Halloween, it happens to be a full moon and daylight savings time. So as we have in our little circular on the, on the web, it's, it's a magical, mystical evening, and trick-or-treating will be a heck of a time this year. And I'm very excited for the kids that wanna do that. Now, just to be clear, if you turn your porch light on. if you turn your porch light on, that's an invitation for the children to come to your home to get candy. The kids have the social distancing and all that stuff, so all that's on our website. I would ask everyone that is going to be trick-or-treating to consult that and make sure that they understand what the rules and regulations are surrounding that. But very excited to give something to the community for the kids to do this year because I can tell you that my two are going stir crazy, and to get them out of the house to run around and grab some candy is going to be a great thing. So looking forward to that, and I know a lot of people in the community are also looking forward to that so that the kids can get out and do something if you're comfortable with that. So I would encourage you to do that if you are comfortable. Next thing I want to speak about is the issue twenty. That is our operating levy renewal coming up in November. I'm going to kind of read through what our circular is going to say. We're going to have a lot of information going out and a lot of different avenues regarding this. But essentially, this is to protect Macedonia and our quality of life. This is our operating funds that, for what you're going to spend, it's about three dollars per month on a hundred thousand dollars. So with the passage of it, safety forces will remain at present levels. Snowfall service will remain at current levels. City staffing levels will remain at present levels and not increase. Parks and Recreation programs and services will be maintained. It is a five-year levy. It has been renewed seven times since nineteen eighty. Money for issue twenty operating levy is used for general fund expenditures. The current effective mileage rate is one point one one for most property owners. It's about thirty-four dollars per hundred thousand dollars of fair market value of a home, or like I said earlier, three dollars a month. I want to say this as clearly as possible. This is a renewal and not an increase, and again, we've been doing this since nineteen eighty. These are the funds that we rely on to keep our operations whole and running and keep providing the service that we have for quite some time. And as always, I ask everyone to put the phones down, drive the car, and please do not drive distracted. With that being said, we'll move right into committee reports.
We had a successful meeting outdoors again at our the second Wednesday of September. We welcomed our new member, whose last name I can't pronounce, so I won't hurt to name his, Barbie. So it was great to have her there and to meet her. We've all decided that it's getting cold, it's getting dark, so we hope to transition to online meetings for November, or from October on, as long as it's allowed by the state. And so as long as it's allowed for these council meetings, we'll be doing it for Parks and Rec Committee. I also am hoping to get a webpage set up for that group so that we can publicize the link to those meetings and also publicize our minutes. I want to thank Cindy Funk, who started typing up minutes for our commission. Apparently, never really had proper minutes before. You know, the actual drawn-out ones, kind of more like notes, was what was going on before. So we should hope to have those on a webpage, too. And then anyone who wants to see what happens in a Parks and Rec Commission meeting can check out our meeting just from the comfort of their own home. So the next meeting will be the second Wednesday in October, and I think that's the sixteenth. I'm just guessing because I don't have a calendar in front of me, but in between the two council meetings, that Wednesday in between will be our next meeting. And we've been really enjoying talking to Director Chaddick and hearing his ideas for Parks and Rec Department. So hopefully that continues, and that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Brandt.
Let me talk real quick about the finance. As the finance chair, I've been working with Mr. Veras to set up our meeting. It's, I hate that word, October. Jessica, I can't believe we're going there already. Excuse me. So what we need to do is take a look at where we're at in twenty twenty, look at the five-year plan for capital, and then also start work on the twenty twenty-one budget. So on October twenty-second, before the council meeting, we'll have a brief report out from Mr. Veras of the status of twenty twenty. Mark your calendar for October twenty-ninth as the tentative five-year plan meeting. Excuse me, and then tentative right now is November fifth, when we'll start looking at the budget for twenty twenty-one. We'll ask, the department has to do as we've done in the past, where they will present their budget so we can ask them any questions that we may have about their department themselves. So, and then our intent, if your fingers crossed, is to get our first reading by November nineteenth. Through the years, there have been times you can pass a temporary budget to take you into the next year, but then you must pass a permanent budget before the end of the first quarter. We've changed that quite a bit ago, that we pass it before the end of the year so that we know what we're going into and what we're going to look like in twenty twenty-one. So that's the goal, is to be able to work together. Unfortunately, between the pandemic and now the holidays coming up, there's going to be a lot of discussion and a lot of work, but Mr. Veras is ready to rock and roll now that he's back from vacation. The other thing I just want to make with the budget, the renewal is six hundred a year. That's two full-time police, two full-time service, two full-time firemen. We don't want to do anything that disturbs the way that we're protected and embraced by our employees. And so the renewal is very important for us to get out and vote, and vote yes for the renewal. Thank you.
Well, Mrs. Tully, you mentioned that you hope to have the budget done by the nineteenth. Do we plan on having a special meeting, being that the twenty-sixth is holiday? Is that the goal?
Yes.
Okay.
Because I know we have, that's why, so we have the holidays, we have Thanksgiving, and we have Christmas, and then we have New Year, so.
So we should plan on having meetings in November. Okay.
Yeah, and Mr. Veras is very well aware of the challenge and ready to rock and roll.
Okay, any other committee reports? Hearing none, we'll go into department reports, starting with Mr. Gelati.
Thank you, Mayor. Not much to report on engineering-wise. Paving on Highland Road is now complete, so that's a good thing. And crack seal work on State Route Eighty-two has been going on this week, and they'll finish up very soon with that work. That's all I have to report. Thanks.
Thank you. Director Veras?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to remind everybody about the filing deadline coming up here on October fifteenth. Recently, we refunded the Series Two Thousand Ten bonds that the city has outstanding. There's ten years left on those bonds, and the projected present value cost savings over the remaining ten years is over four hundred eighty thousand dollars. Almost, well, it's kind of crazy, but the Ariel Tower money that we just borrowed, One-One Two Thousand Nineteen, I looked into refunding that as well, and I think we're going to combine that with the borrowing of the money for the eight hundred megahertz radios, and the projected savings on the remaining eight years of the Ariel Tower debt is just about eighty thousand dollars. End of my report, Mayor.
Thank you for that. I always like when we hear to save money, especially eighty thousand dollars. So thank you for your hard work on that.
Yeah, and the four hundred eighty thousand.
Oh, yeah. Thank you for that, nonetheless.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, Chief Ripley.
Thank you, Mayor. Unfortunately, I have the news to deliver that the fire department, due to the pandemic, I know everyone is sick of hearing about that, our holiday, fall holiday party, also known as our Halloween party, we will not be hosting it at the fire station this year, and also the Fire Association's Pancake Day is also being canceled for the same reason. It's very unfortunate. We look forward to bringing residents in for that. They seem to enjoy it, but we just can't do it with the current climate. Unfortunately, there's been no decision made by the North Pole yet about Santa delivery. The head elf has contacted us, and they're trying to figure out a way. Santa certainly wants to do it, but we just have to, they've got to figure out, tell us how they would like to get it done. And lastly, I would like to thank council, and as the mayor said, thank the residents for passing the levy a couple of years ago. This eight hundred radio system is going to make it much safer for the employees, therefore safer for our residents. And I just want to thank you for getting that done tonight in three readings. I greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. All right, next up is Mrs. Smith.
Thanks, Mayor. HR continues to work on the Employee Appreciation Week, which is going to be October twelfth for that entire week, where we're still continuing to get ready for our flu shots and our biometric testing on November second. And that's all I have to report for this group.
Thank you. Director Collins?
I just wanted to thank Chief Ripley for the great work on the radio upgrades, and I hope everybody is happy and safe and enjoying their time with their loved ones. No report, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Cal.
Thank you. All right, Chief Golden?
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to thank Chief Ripley for the job he did with the eight hundred megahertz radios. As long as I can remember, the radios have always been Brian's forte, and he's worked very hard to get this proposal ready for council, and it's very much appreciated by the folks in the police department. So thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Jeff.
All right, Director Chaddick?
Thank you, Mayor, and appreciate everyone being here tonight. I want to welcome Mr. Hack to the Parks and Rec Commission. We're excited to have you join us. We needed some more Jason power on commission, so it'll be great to have you onboard. As far as the Park and Rec Commission meeting, I just looked it up. Our last minutes state that October twenty-first will be the next meeting. That would be the third Wednesday in October, which seems a little different. The fourteenth would have been the second Wednesday, and I also show November eighteenth as the November date of potential for that meeting. So with that, I will say we are working very diligently as a Parks and Recreation staff to bring a Halloween activity to the community. We know how important it is to keep kids active and involved, so we're working on a COVID-friendly activity, bring people in. We will have more information on that as we conclude selecting a date. I anticipate in the next week and a half releasing all the information as far as a Halloween activity. We are currently concluding phase three of leak detection testing on our hot tub here in the Recreation Center. We're pretty excited because we're finally getting some answers as to what is going on within the hot tub. We'll bring more information to the community on that in the next council meeting, once we have final information done. And the week of October twenty-sixth, we will be doing a replacement flooring in the second floor of the Recreation Center. We're very excited about this opportunity to get new flooring, to replace old dated flooring that we currently have. It'll be more user-friendly for the fitness areas, which we're definitely firing up to get for the community. And that concludes my report for today.
And I'll also add that that flooring had many trip hazards throughout it and then reached its useful life quite some time ago, so thank you for getting that done. And additionally, I also want to thank you, Director Chaddick, for the food trucks that we have coming in. And I'm going to mention this for tomorrow, if anyone watching. One of my personal favorites is coming. Do you want to talk about that a little bit?
Sure. We have, is it Barrio? Barrio. I always get the name wrong. I apologize for that. Barrio Tacos is coming into town. They will be here from four to seven tomorrow at the rec center. So my encouragement to everyone is to stop by the rec center to the food truck and then get to any place you can after that and watch the Nordonia High School football team play their next game. That's what I would encourage everyone to do with some fresh food. So that'll be tomorrow from four to seven.
Thank you. And if you haven't had a Barrio taco, I strongly recommend you try one because they are delicious. Okay, Director Natavange?
Thank you, Mayor. What I want to say is that with the chill in the air, we know what that means, and Councilman Tully understands my feelings the same, is that weather's going to be changing, so fall's going to be upon us. Get into your sheds, pull out your rakes, gas up them leaf blowers, and just be ready because next council meeting, we're going to be having discussions of how we're going to be starting our leaf collection again for this fall, so hope everybody will be prepared. And also, I'd just like to say congratulations to our safety services for the radio upgrades. Now, it's awesome to witness to something, you know, of that nature to catapult us forward, where we need to be. And I like to hold on to the shirt tails also because when you get upgrades, that means we're getting some upgrades, too, with the radios. So it's going to be a great way of communication, and I'm looking forward to it. So thank you, Chief Ripley, for everything you did, and look forward to having them in there. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. And last but not least, Director Gaddetti?
No report, sir.
Okay. Then we'll move right into unfinished business. Don't everybody jump? Nobody? Anyone? Any takers? All right.
Be sure to support the city and vote for the renewal, issue twenty. That's all.
Renewal with no increase, key words, right? Thank you for that. All right, any new business?
You're muted, Mrs. Tully.
Just say where, you know, when we talk about snow and fall, today was almost exactly twelve hours daylight to dark, which means starting tomorrow, it's going to start getting darker earlier. So by Halloween, make sure you've got your lights on if we're going to have the candy, because it's going to be a nice spooky night. As the mayor said, it's a blue moon, second full moon of the month. The next morning at two A.M., we all lose an hour of sleep. So it's going to be an interesting time, and Chief Ripley, I hope Santa Claus gets an appeal to come. Thank you.
We're all hoping for that, Ms. Tully.
You know, there are people who are doing early voting, or you're doing voting via the mail. The renewal's on there. Please vote yes. Thank you.
Okay, any other new business? Hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you and have a good evening.
You, too.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everybody.
Have a good night, everyone.